Bear with us a minute or so, folks, and we'll get started. All right, here we are at 7:00. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. As Director Bennerott indicated, this is the first meeting we're having live in chambers for many months, and we're pleased to be back live and doing a hybrid sort of meeting, which he also described. And I'm going to just go over a couple of things before we call the meeting to order. And that is, for those watching on cable TV or on edinamn.gov/livemeetings or on facebook.com, you can participate in community comment or the public hearing. There's one public hearing this matter this evening, and that matter will be before us in a bit. You can call 800-374-0221. The number's on the screen for you to see at home and here in chambers. The conference ID is 923-2939. Give the operator your name and your street address and your telephone number. Press *1 on your telephone keypad to get in the queue to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Just a reminder for anybody calling in with respect to community comment, you cannot speak on anything that's on the agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public hearing. Other than that, we welcome your comments and concerns and hope you'll call in and participate. So, having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order, and roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Houghlin.
Here. The next matter before us is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda on the council or from a staff standpoint? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. I kept thinking about that old roll call vote that we had to do on everything when we were doing everything on a hybrid basis. So, nice to be back to a voice vote by simple majority. Now we are on community comment, folks. So if you've been standing by on the phone, again, that number's 800-374-0221. Conference ID is on the screen, 923-2939. Make sure you give the operator your name, your street address, your phone number. Press *1 to get in the queue, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Do we have anybody on the line, Director Bennerott, that wants to speak during community comment?
We do not yet have anyone on the line. I'd recommend you start with the people in the room, and if a full minute hasn't passed by that point, we'll just...
All right, let's do that. That'll be efficient. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them under the community comment portion of the agenda? Yes, sir, come on forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is ready on. My name's Tim Eikoff, and I live at 4625 Arden Avenue in Edina. I was born and raised in Morningside, graduated Edina in '83, played hockey for Willard Eye Club. My wife and I have raised two daughters here, started and sold a software company in Edina, and we're members at Edina Country Club. My wife is with me here tonight. She's a registered nurse and has successfully treated many COVID patients from home, including a state legislator. I'm here to speak about the mask mandate ordered by the city manager on January 31st. Today, at the State of the City luncheon, I heard the mayor refer to the situation as "a little squabble," and he stated the city had received some nasty emails surrounding it. With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, here's why it's not just a little squabble and why emails sent by the community opposing the mandate should be heard. Here are just some of the highlights. On January 7th, the city council voted against a mask mandate. Two school board members sent emails expressing their disappointment and highlighted hockey spectators without masks. January 19th, the mayor, manager, and two council members begin discussions to implement a mask mandate at Braemar because of infections in staff and guests. Superintendent Stanley confirms to mayor that the mandate will work for her. January 22nd, at 7:26 PM, the city manager sends an email to Superintendent Stanley outlining an offer for her to receive a Braemar mask mandate if she places an official request. January 27th, 10:11 AM, Member Jackson sends an email to Superintendent Stanley and says, "I just talked with the mayor and Scott Neal. We're all queued up to put the mask mandate in place at Braemar Arena as soon as you contact Scott. We can do this without a meeting." January 27th, 3:40, city manager tells the full council in an email, "I received a request today from school superintendent Stanley asking the city to impose a temporary mask mandate at Braemar." My wife has asked city attorney David Kendall for an investigation into potential open meeting and code of conduct violations on February 16th and 22nd. She still hasn't heard any response. Today, we learned that there is no formal process to file a complaint against the council or manager. I'm handing back to you all the FOIA documents along with our formal complaint. The public deserves to know if this is how business has been conducted, will be conducted, and how the public will be portrayed when their voice with their concerns or a differing opinion is discussed. These FOIA emails are disturbing, and we have asked for an investigation of accountability and a path forward that protects the Edina community from these types of violations and decisions impacting our lives, businesses, and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eikoff. Do you want to make your statement part of the record?
I do, and I'd also like to turn back the FOIA to the clerk.
Thank you.
Do I leave these here?
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Although I'm not officially an Edina resident, I do like to still think I'm a part of the community. Tonight is my last city council meeting as the Edina City Management Fellow, and I just wanted to take the time out to say thank you all for welcoming me into this community and allowing me to study and learn city government for the forefront. I've tendered my resignation. I'll be moving to the city of Northfield to accept a position there as Assistant to City Administrator there. And I've just really had a great time here over the past year and a half. I've got to work on affordable housing projects, even helped the city pass its First Tenant Protection Ordinance, worked on a lot of COVID plans and preparedness plans, and again, thank you, Scott, for giving me the tools to learn and grow in an environment to just nurture my leadership, and I thank you all for really giving me the space to grow here. So, thank you.
Ms. Kareem, it's been a pleasure having you here. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Scott, anything you want to say about our Reese Kareem that we've had with us for 18 months, which is unusual?
Right. It's a two-year program, a two-year cycle, and normally it takes the fellows a couple of different attempts to get a job. She got her job on the first attempt. So, that's unusual, but I think it's indicative of her quality in terms of her experience and just her academic prowess as well. So, we're going to miss Reese. She's done really good work here, and I'm looking forward to seeing what she'll do in Northfield because I have a fond place in my heart for that town, too. Thanks.
Yes, having been the city manager there, that was a place that you greatly enjoyed, and we're really proud of you and pleased that you were able to run the program here. You know, it was terrific having you around, and not too far away either. So, we'll see you from time to time, I suspect.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, community comment. Anybody else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? Anybody online now? Director Bennerott?
I do have someone who's joined the call. If that person would like to speak in community comment, please press * then the number 1 on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number 1. That will indicate your desire to speak, and I can introduce you, and I can do that right now. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Julie Rissler? And Ms. Rissler, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
My name is Julie Rissler. I live at 6112 Ashcroft Avenue, and I'm calling about the pedestrian bridge. I know that we've discussed it, and there sort of is a sense that it's going to take a really long time to replace, and I would like to make some comments about the fact that it really is one of the most critical pieces of pedestrian infrastructure in a city that really doesn't have a lot of pedestrian pathways. And it does connect the Concord neighborhood and also parts of countryside. People go down Wooddale Avenue, and then they would cross over Valley View, go down that little stretch of Wooddale, which is a street that doesn't have any sidewalks if you're looking south of Valley View. And it's really kind of interesting to think about that. But I, you know, remember seeing so many people coming down there, especially on afternoons and weekends, and it just really is very sad that now the connector that gets me over to Southdale, over to my dentist, gets me when I want to walk my dog to the vet there, is no longer there. And I think a couple things really need to happen. We have a climate action plan. We have a dashboard, and the dashboard should reflect the reality that the fact that that pedestrian bridge is out means there's going to be fewer people walking, biking, getting where they need to go using their own power, and there's going to be more people hopping in their vehicles. I think when we have pedestrian infrastructure that's compromised, we need to take a look at what the alternative route is. It's Valley View. I walked it on Sunday. It wasn't shoveled at the time. It was really hard to walk and get my way over to Southdale. I think we need to find a way to really figure out how we are going to evaluate and value the very anemic pedestrian and bike infrastructure that we have. And as I was looking at the comprehensive plan, and particularly the Wooddale-Vallyview area, there was nothing about this bridge. And I just kind of think it's not really necessarily on people's radar, but it is... the people who use it, we really care about it. It's on our radar, but we need to figure out how to get it into the documentation that is used to make the plans. So, thank you for considering these ideas.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rissler. Appreciate you calling in. I had a conversation with somebody just on Sunday walking around Lake Cornelia about the same issue, and so I think we know it's a MINDOT issue along with the city, and we're working as diligently on it as we can. I don't know if Manager Neal has any current update on the status of evaluation of whether it should be repaired or replaced, but I know there are certainly people with small children or with disabilities that would benefit greatly from having it be an accessible sort of bridge and not just a series of staircases that you have to rise and traverse in order to go from one side to the other.
That's right. We do recognize it's an important piece of infrastructure for the city. Director Milner is in pretty frequent contact with his contacts at MINDOT, and they know we feel like that. They know all of you feel like that, and we're going to work with them as close as we can in terms of design of what replaces that bridge if they do indeed replace it.
All right, good. What can we do to encourage them to replace and not repair?
Well, I don't know. We just had that discussion the other day. So, Director Milner is going to actually ask that question through MINDOT to find out.
Okay. I'll ask as well through the contacts I have there. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Director Bennerott, anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? All right, let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the manager's response to community comments that were made at the last meeting. Manager Neal?
We did not have any community comments at our last meeting, so I don't have anything to respond to.
All right, very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's several items on there. I think members of the council wanted to remove item 6V, as in Victor, for a conversation. That's proposed resolution 2022-24. Other than 6V, was there anything else that any member of the council wanted to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6V? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Pierce, to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6V. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, let's go to 6V, and I'm going to go to Member Jackson, who raised some issues in our work session about this because it was part of that agenda as well. Member Jackson, anything you wanted to comment on?
There's a lot, actually. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we had a discussion at the work session. I raised it that this doesn't really say... it's unclear what this resolution is doing. I had a question from a resident, and it's... I know what it's about. It's about a bill that's in the legislature right now, but it's really unclear that that's what we're talking about with this resolution. And so, in our discussion upstairs, we talked about a letter that you had sent to the legislature, and I did take a look at it. We've got it here. And if you will allow me, there are six sort of points that are made in your letter, Mr. Mayor, and I think that we can probably just cover those points and have then staff put together a resolution based on those things.
All right.
So, I'll do that as a starter, and then I would love to hear the input of my fellow city council members.
It'll be helpful, very much so, I think. Thank you.
Okay, so the six sort of whereas clauses I pull from your letter are, first of all, there's a bill in the legislature which is House File 3256, the Legalize Affordable Housing Act, and we have concerns with it. Second, this is a zoning peremptory bill. Third, we have made sound planning decisions in the past with using our current zoning powers. Fourth, we support... we're not ready to get rid of single-family housing, and this bill does get rid of single-family housing statewide. So, in your letter, you say, "House File 3256 would require all cities to allow duplexes and accessory dwelling units in all single-family zoned areas. This is a draconian measure that is out of step with the wishes of residents who intentionally choose to live in single-family neighborhoods." So, something to that effect. Something that I add that is not in this letter is that we have been able to use the planned unit development power to get affordable housing in our city, and we don't want to lose that, that this eliminates that. And then sixth, this is a measure that's opposed by cities across the state. And then we would have a therefore clause, therefore we oppose this bill and want to maintain the local decision-making authority related to zoning and housing. So, something like that.
Yeah, I think that's a good start, a great start. Thoughts from other council members on the structure that Commissioner... Member Jackson has articulated. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Member Jackson's summary of your letter. I think it's hard-hitting. I think that the response to Representative Elkin's bill is important and needs to be made on a timely basis. The importance of that is, is that decision-making on zoning must remain local, that it must remain within communities. There's a couple of other pieces of this particular resolution that require, I believe, some attention. I think that we can recognize, we understand, that much of the inability of people of color, of indigenous people, to gain access to housing is clear. We understand that. However, the state of Minnesota protects 11 other classes of people, all of whom can be affected by prejudice and bias in access to housing, both affordable housing and market-rate housing. And so, those people do need to be considered in a resolution. If we recite one protected class, I think we need to consider most of them, if not all. The federal guidelines are a little bit lighter than that, but still exist. There's some other language in here that relates to, I think, some questions about single-family zoning in our city, and I'm certain that that isn't the intent of that language, but I know that our residents are very clear on the fact that single-family zoning is important, one of the reasons that they make investments in our community. One of the things that people wish to have is their streets, their homes, and to not be required or even question the ability of them to continue the quality of life that they have earned. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Member Staunton?
All I would add is that while there may be some argument that single-family housing, by restricting the supply of housing, has an impact on affordability, I think it's important that local governments like ours retain the ability to decide how to make changes to that in order to create more affordability, and I think we have a track record of doing that. And so, I think a one-size-fits-all solution for the whole state doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you. The only thing I would add, and it's along the lines of what Member Staunton was addressing, I don't think we should editorialize anything in here. I think what I object to is the state taking the power away from the local government to work with our constituents to address the issues. And I think communities are all different, and it is incumbent on us to solve the problem of affordable housing within Edina. And I think we have... we've all worked on a myriad of ways with Director Hawkins to try and solve this problem. And so, I think we should just be clear about that, full stop. The state shouldn't decide. Local decisions like this should be made with local elected officials and their constituents. And to me, that's really it. And then if we continue to work on this very important issue, everything that we've just said is true. I don't disagree with any of it, but I think it can confuse the point, which is, we got it. The state shouldn't try to tell us what to do. Our constituents have elected us. We work with them to solve problems in the city of Edina, and we believe we should continue to do that. And I think other cities have also said the same thing. Yeah. So, I would just encourage us not to convolute that message. Make that pretty strong.
Thank you.
And I would just add as a footnote to that, that we would welcome more tools, not fewer tools.
All right, good. Manager Neal, we had some language on a proposed resolution, 2022-24, entitled to "Resolution Supporting Housing and Local Decision-Making Authority." If we took that caption and that resolution number and then added opposition to the header, add opposition to House File 3256, based on the structure, the structure that Member Jackson has suggested and the comments that other council members have made, do you think you could craft, from a staff level, an appropriate resolution that we could approve after the fact, or the council could authorize the mayor to sign, for example?
I think we could, given what we've heard here tonight and also some of your comments from the work session, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Member Jackson, go ahead.
If I may. Member Pierce, did you... were your comments about the draft that we had in our packet or about the structure that I outlined from the mayor's letter? Were you satisfied with the... do you want me to read the six points again, or were you satisfied with that?
I don't disagree with any of the six points. What I am... and so I'll just... maybe I'll say it in an extreme. The six points could be a letter that's on a full legal-sized sheet of paper. What I think the issue is, is two sentences in the center of a legal-sized sheet of paper. And that's all I'm saying. I don't want that point to get lost in everything else in the letter. I agree with the six points, but I would, at a minimum, maybe that's in bold, the top paragraph, that's what the central issue is, and then the other five points can still be in there. So, I didn't disagree with anything of the six points. To me, it's just the approach and how we handle it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. And I trust that Manager Neal will cover that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion, an appropriate motion on this matter?
So, I will move that we authorize staff to write a resolution along the lines of what we've discussed here with the points that I raised, with a couple of additional things by my fellow members, and that we then authorize the mayor to sign a resolution based on that so that we can get it to the legislature as soon as possible.
Second. All right. Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton. Manager Neal, comfortable?
Yep.
Everything? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Well, thank you. That concludes the consent portion of the agenda, and now we're moving on to a really special part of our agenda this evening, and we've waited probably well over a year now to start celebrating some of these folks in our community that we're calling hometown heroes. And Director Bennerott has three of our hometown heroes here this evening with us and their families, and we're going to celebrate them a little bit. And she's going to talk a little bit about the program, and she's going to talk about what each of these people did that was so heroic that deserved the recognition of their city and their city council and this opportunity to come and speak to the council this evening. Director Bennerott?
Thank you. Edina is made up of people who pride themselves in making the city a great place for living, learning, raising families, and doing business. For more than a decade, we've honored some of them as hometown heroes. We write stories about them for our website and our social media accounts. This year, we'd like to take that recognition a step further and also honor them here during your meetings. Tonight, I would like you to honor three residents who are heroes in every definition of the word. Each saved another person's life in 2021. Rushing through a limestone gorge, the waterfalls at Willow River State Park in Wisconsin are 100 feet wide and cascade nearly 50 feet down. 18-year-old Magnus Breen enjoyed a trip with his mother there in July. On that day, Magnus climbed up to the steepest fall to explore, and then he meandered the riverbank to check out some frogs. There, he heard a child calling for help. A young boy was quickly going downstream toward the drop and unable to stop himself. Magnus overcame his own physical challenges to climb to the boy's rescue and prevent him from going over Willow Falls. Magnus Breen, the city of Edina, thanks you for being a hometown hero.
[applause]
We want to take you to church, and then we're going to have your family come up too. I see your dad has thrown in from the east coast, which is going to be a thing to have here. And I see a lot of family resemblance there. I even see your grandma in there. Why not? Family.
Is this a laughing? She's a liar. Yeah, watch out. Okay, there we go. Do you want to step forward just a little bit? You're trying to hide me. All right, here we go. Big smiles, big smiles. Okay, thank you very much.
what happened, like, I guess, last summer, and, I mean, I should clarify that I didn't, I mean, it mostly took mental strength rather than physical strength, but I, I'm glad I was able to help out in that situation, and, yeah, it was, so I'm really grateful for the recognition I get tonight, and, yeah.
All right. I'm a very emotional person, so maybe this is going to take a little longer than I thought. Lee Bottom's family owns a cabin on Turtle Lake in Wisconsin. On his way home to Edina from there one night in November, he saw a glow off in the distance. At first, he assumed it was someone's holiday light display lighting up the sky, but as he got closer, he realized he was witnessing a burning house. He called 911 right away and ran to the front door. He rang the doorbell, pounded on the door, but there was no response. He continued to look for signs of anyone inside and saw what looked like a nightlight on in one room. He was able to wake the sole resident of the house and ended up kicking down a door to get to her and carry her, a 77-year-old woman dressed only in pajamas and no shoes, outside and to safety until help arrived. Lee Bottom, the city of Edina, thanks you for being a hometown hero.
It, it wasn't expected, and it was, it was a nice surprise, so thank you for that. The experience was, I wasn't supposed to be there. I ended up going up a couple days early to get the pontoon in the, in the putaway, and I just lucked out and was able to find a situation that I was able to help somebody, and I just hope everybody would do the same, so.
Sidney Rayleigh learned the Heimlich maneuver when she was 11 years old as part of a Red Cross babysitting course. Four years later, working at McDonald's in Eden Prairie, she used that technique to help save a choking customer. Under the circumstances, actually reaching the customer in a timely manner was a feat unto itself, one that required her to jump through the drive-through window in December to provide that assistance. Sidney Rayleigh, the city of Edina, thanks you for being a hometown hero.
Members of the city council, first of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for giving me the great honor of coming here tonight and being with all of you. If there's anything that I want to take away from this story is that I, despite all of the blaring headlines and stories and crazy experiences I've gotten from this entire debacle, I, I'm not a hero. I am just a person, a normal person like all of you who stepped in and somehow managed to do the right thing, and hopefully someday we can all do the same for someone else. Thank you.
Those were emotional experiences. I think in all the years I've been on the council, it's the first time we haven't had a dry eye on the place. It was really, Jennifer, thank you so much for putting that together, too. And all the recipients, thanks for being heroes. All right, we, in the public hearing portion of the agenda tonight, we have one public hearing matter, and Bill Nuenendorf, our community development manager, is going to make the presentation. This involves a matter that we've been working on at the council for many months, in fact, probably well over a year, and this is the project at 70th and France, and tonight we're going to have a public hearing around potentially establishing a tax, tax increment financing district for that particular project. So Bill Nuenendorf is going to make a presentation. We've got our advisors, Jay Lindgren from Dorsey &amp; Whitney with us this evening, and Nick Anhut from Ellers &amp; Associates, our public finance expert, and then developers Ted Carlson from Orion and Brent Webb, and I think Nate Podraths are here from, well, here, a couple of them are here, anyway. Thanks, gentlemen, for being here. And so, go ahead, Mr. Nuenendorf, make your presentation, please.
Great, yes, thank you very much. Well, I've done a lot of these presentations and a lot of city meetings. That is a tough act to follow. I was hoping for a five-minute recess to clear the emotions tonight. But this evening, I have Resolution 2022-26, and this proposed resolution would establish a new tax increment financing district at 70th and France. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this has been a topic of a lot of conversation for several months, in fact, nearly a year. As we pursue this concept, we're following the state law that, that relates to, to tax increment financing, and this is one of the steps in that process. Let's see, there we go. So in summary, the developers have requested that the city use tax increment financing to help make their multi-phase redevelopment of the U.S. bank site feasible and financeable. Over the last several months, the city has engaged our financial advisors at Ellers Associates and our legal advisors at Dorsey &amp; Whitney to review the performas, the budgets, to scrutinize them with the best practices in, in financing, and we have confirmed that indeed a budget gap does exist in that project. Over the last couple months, the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority has discussed the financing and what role the city might play to address that gap, to help make the project financeable, and we're holding, holding this public hearing tonight as the next step to consider providing some degree of public finance for that project. So my presentation tonight is the same that's in the, in the packet. I'll run through it fairly quickly, and of course, we're always happy to answer any questions. But at the conclusion of, of my remarks, we will hold the public hearing, and then that public hearing will continue for the next week or so as well. The district location is at the intersection of 70th and France. It's a parcel that's about 5.7 acres. It's just south of the Galleria. The site has two buildings on it. The first building was built in the mid-1970s for the first Southdale National Bank, which eventually became U.S. Bank. And then, in addition, was constructed about seven years later, a multi-story office addition. The office building has been vacant for, for some, for some time now. The bank branch is still in operations, but of course, with COVID, there's been a lot of changes of hours and staffing and everything else. So the, the bank intends to stay on the property, but they don't need a three-story bank building with six or eight drive-through lanes that they have today. The bank is intending to downsize to a new building on the site and then allow the remainder of the site to be redeveloped in a fashion that's consistent with the Southdale design guidelines, to break up that big six-acre parcel into four blocks. Essentially, each block would have a new development on it, office, commercial, housing, and then parking to serve the site as well as the broader community. So on this slide, I've identified just a few of the comments and suggestions from a variety of, of community plans that have been prepared over, over the last several decades, actually. Our comprehensive plan, our Southeast Edina redevelopment plan are the two most notable guides for new development in this area and redevelopment. And each of those plans is peppered with just a number of goals to create a more vibrant space, an area that is less dependent on automobile traffic, but more welcoming of pedestrians, bicyclists, while of course accommodating cars, trucks, buses, and all the vehicles that we encounter on a day-to-day basis. The desire to have more mixed uses is included in all of these documents, as well as new development that attains a higher level of sustainability than was envisioned back in the 1970s, when these buildings were first constructed. Over the past year, the developer has secured preliminary zoning approvals, and the most recent approved site plan is shown here. They prepared this plan during a time of a lot of uncertainty and price escalation in the marketplace, so this is actually the second version of the site plan. It's, it's downsized from the first version that was first approved, but it shows generally the four parcel layout. Here's some renderings of the project. We've all seen these before, but I have them here if there's any questions. And one of the key attributes of this project, and frankly, why we're considering the use of tax increment financing, is to achieve the many public benefits that are possible with this project. This would be the first project to apply the Southdale design guidelines since they were adopted, and subdivide that large parcel into smaller properties. It'd be the first to comply with a new sustainability policy, a policy that requires not just the bare minimum, but it really raises the bar regarding sustainability. Notably, this project would include the first Class A office space to be built in the 21st The most recent Class A space was built in the 1990s, so it's, it's hard to attract state-of-the-art businesses and top employers when your newest building is two decades old. Also, this project would provide new structured parking for shared use. It would serve the, the folks on the site, employees, customers, clients, staff, but also be open for public parking to serve people in the immediate area. And then there's a number of other contributions that, they're notable, but honestly, they're expected for something of this scale. There's an incredible increase in the property tax base, something that will benefit the city, the county, the school district. The project of this scale also contributes a sizable park dedication fee, and a number of contributions to the sewer fund and the water fund, as well as contributions to our affordable housing fund. Those are, those add millions of dollars to the project, but frankly, they're expected, so I don't really give them bonus points for that, but all the other benefits, I think, are truly extraordinary. The project itself currently is budgeted to cost more than a quarter billion dollars. About $250 million is the current cost. We're hoping that, that, that number sticks. Costs are unpredictable these days. The developers requested $22 million in tax increment. That would be pledged with a note, so it's not cash, but it's a note that when the project is finished and the developer pays their new property taxes, we would use those new taxes to pay down the note. If the project doesn't get started, or stalls out, or isn't finished, then that risk is with the developer, not with the city. I've got a couple of the standard slides about what is TIF. I've gone through those many times, but happy to answer questions if it comes up. But I do want to touch about, about process. So the step tonight is considering the creation of the TIF district. This is one of the fundamental steps that we need to go through in order to, to comply with state law. Later on, we will consider specific funding for the project. In mid-February, we did meet with the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority and gave general consent to the terms and conditions, the term sheet that, that will likely be included on this project, but there is more work to, to do in the future. Just a little bit of context about tax increment financing. So the city currently has nine active TIF districts. This particular one is obviously at 70th and France. When it comes to the use of TIF in Edina, the city's used tax increment for several decades. We helped, or we used TIF to help build Edinburgh Park, Centennial Lakes, 50th and France, not the current 50th and France, but the 50th and France from three decades ago. So we've got a long track record of using tax increment, but we use it on a very limited basis. This chart was prepared by our advisors at Ellers Associates, and it shows the current proportion, or actually percentage, of the tax base that's included in a TIF district. So you see in the city of Edina, maybe you can't see my cursor, but on the far right, about 1% of the city's tax base is included in a, in a TIF district. By comparison, if you look at many of our neighbors, they use TIF 5%, 10%, 13%. We like to use it sparingly when it's necessary, and we think this is one of those situations. In your packet is a very lengthy TIF plan. It includes the report that confirms that the buildings and the site qualify per the state statute for TIF, and this plan has been, has been prepared, it's been shared with our colleagues at the school district and at the county. A draft was sent to them several weeks ago. As of this date, we've not heard any concerns or questions from them about this plan. We're recommending that a 15-year renewal district be established. There's several different types of TIF districts. This is the one that's most appropriate for this particular, particular case, and the impact, financial impact of, of this district is considerable and could make the project viable. The current tax capacity of the property is just under $300,000. When completed, we're estimating that the tax capacity will increase by a factor of 10 to over $3 million. So there's lots of different ways to measure this growth. There's the tax capacity, there's the market value, there's the actual taxes paid. For some projects, you hope to see the property value double, maybe triple. These are the kind of projects where the market value is expected to increase by a factor of 12. That's a significant redevelopment. That's a massive increase to the tax base that is shared by the city, the school, and the counties, but it takes time to get there, and that's how tax increment financing works. After reviewing the developers' performa, looking at their budgets, at their returns, we've determined that this, this type of growth would not happen if the site was simply remodeled or a more modest mixed-use development was built. Without TIF, it's our opinion that a proposed project of this scale and quality simply would not be viable. would not be viable at this location. In our TIF plan, one of the important sections is the budget of the TIF district. So Ellers estimates that about $39 million will be generated over the 15-year term of this district. These are the new taxes. So all the current taxes will continue to be spread out and shared with the city, the school, the county, and others. But when complete, there's a sizable increase that can be used to help fund some of the utilities and some of the public improvements to make this project viable. So in short, we've confirmed that the site does qualify as a renewal district. The report from Braun InterTech is in your packet. We've confirmed that the plan does generally comply with the city's plans for redevelopment, and we're absolutely, we'll be visiting the Planning Commission next week to have that certified in a resolution, but we've included that report already. We've also confirmed with the help of Ellers that the high development costs does result in a financial gap for this project that prevents the delivery and completion of it. So it's our conclusion that it's not reasonably expected that a redevelopment of this scale and caliber could happen without the use of tax increment financing. Staff does recommend the approval of this resolution to establish the TIF district, but of course after the public hearing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Also tonight, we have our team, Jay Lindgren at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, Nick Anhut at Ellers Associates. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the developers also in the audience, but we're happy to answer any questions after the public hearing or now if you prefer.
Good, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Manager Nundorf at this point in time? This is something we've been working on, and we've had other presentations and recent council meetings about the establishment of a TIF district. Member Jackson, looks like you're poised to ask a question.
I am, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of questions, actually. When you presented this to us as the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, you had some pro forma sheets that showed for the apartment building and for the commercial building, and then a budget. Would this be the appropriate time to kind of take a look at those again?
We certainly could, but those documents are not part of the TIF plan.
Okay.
They would be part of a future agreement with the developer, so they're not technically on the agenda, but we're happy to answer questions if you have them.
Okay, I guess, you know, my question's kind of going to... We've built a lot of apartment buildings in Edina, but as you mentioned, we haven't seen a commercial building, a new one, built for over 20 years. And I know that they're very different in the way they're financed and a lot of these things, and I wondered if you could kind of talk a little bit about the importance of bringing a new office building to Edina as our Economic Development Director and why this is so significant.
Sure, sure. As most people have seen, there's been no shortage of new development in Edina. The current industry type that's favored in the marketplace is rental apartments. It's difficult to finance condominiums. A lot of people are ready to move into apartments, whatever their age is, so there's certainly no market shortage of that. But new office space is a whole different story. We've seen some new commercial buildings constructed in Edina, a new retail center just west of the Galleria. We've got like the RAH Gallery, there's some one-off projects, but as I mentioned, it's been over 20 years since a new office building has been constructed. And Edina historically has been a destination for people from outside of the community to visit us and spend their money here, either shopping, dining, or working. We think that we're well-positioned in the metro area to continue to attract workers, shoppers, and people dining and everything else. But there's a lot of competition out there. There's a lot of space in the marketplace, and a lot of this office space in Edina frankly is old and outdated. Some of your top-tier professional offices don't want a Class C space, they want a Class A space, and right now, Edina doesn't have a lot to offer in that category. So while there's certainly a lot of uncertainty in the market, many of us still work from home, full-time, part-time, that's changing, and looks like it's starting to change rapidly, hopefully, but there's still a lot of unpredictability in it. But my recommendation is that if Edina doesn't have any new space to offer, we will not attract those businesses that are looking for it. So I'm fully supportive of having a new opportunity to grow our employment sector here in Edina.
Thank you. My second question is about the "but-for" test. Some people look at a "but-for" test as, well, this is a town that's failing and they can't get any businesses to come in. That's certainly not the case here in Edina. Can you kind of talk about what our standard is for the "but-for" test and how we look at that?
Sure, happy to. Yes, so that is the standard in the state statute for tax increment financing, and the implication, or what's implied there is, but-for the use of TIF is the project viable. Not any project, but the project that's in front of us and that's capable of being pursued. So for example, I don't know if U.S. Bank is even interested in this, but I mean, they probably could do a little strip center and a nice surface parking lot and a little apartment building or something, and probably not use TIF. But if you recall, a few years ago, Ryan Companies brought a proposal to us that looked similar to that, and we heard from the Planning Commission and the City Council that that wasn't the type and scale of development we are looking for. And we then adopted the Southdale Design Guidelines to create a vision for something a little bit bolder, a little bit more 21st century, a little bit less auto-oriented. So certainly, the "but-for" test really relates to the project that is proposed and in front of us. This project did secure its preliminary zoning back in November, and as I mentioned, as we've gone through their financials, and we've gone through them on multiple occasions, drilling down and spending lots of time with the developer and their financial folks to make sure that we're understanding it and seeing the full story, we have confirmed that but-for the use of tax increment, this project will not be financed and will not be built.
Terrific, thank you. And then my final question is, it's not, it's my understanding, it's not part of the state statute, but when Edina looks at doing TIF, we also have to have a public purpose to that. And I know there's been some questions about the parking garage, and can you kind of tell us, and I don't know if this is appropriate for the developer or for you to answer, but why parking for an office building is important, both in terms of, I know, the ability to attract businesses, or some of the, why the expectation is that there needs to be parking along with the office building?
Sure, I'm happy to address that briefly, and perhaps, Mr. Mayor, if you want to invite the developer, they could probably get into more of the nuts and bolts of it. But for new office space, most people still drive. You know, and some of us are starting to walk more, or bicycle more, or maybe take the bus. This site is on a fairly active metro transit bus route, the number six route. But today, most people still drive, and especially when you're looking at an office space of this scale, in order for that to be successful, it's more than Edina residents that work there. People will be driving from all over the metro. So in the future, maybe we all do Uber and get a ride to work two days a week, or whatever it is. But today, in 2022 and 2023, most of us still drive. And so without the parking, I don't think tenants would sign a lease there. That's just, that's my opinion. I think the developer has probably some more detail on that. They're talking to tenants every day, trying to lease the space, but I think that's the general story that you'll hear.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for those good questions. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nundorf, could you expand just a little bit for purposes of the public hearing? This is a two-tiered TIF approach, and I'd wonder if you could expand on that a little bit as people watch and listen.
Sure, happy to. So the TIF term sheet, we discussed at the HRA a few weeks ago. If we proceed forward, we'll talk about that quite a bit more in depth. But the development of the site is actually going to happen in three phases. The first phase is getting the new U.S. Bank branch built and up and running. Once that's complete, they can proceed with the apartment phase and the office phase. Ideally, it all happens at once, right? Ideally, the apartment and the office are aligned together and financed together and built together. Frankly, it's the least costly way to do it, and the most efficient and the most productive. These days, it seems like nothing goes perfectly according to plan, so we've structured the TIF term sheet to take into consideration that the apartment might go first and the office follows a few years later. That's not Plan A, but that is Plan B, so that's how we structured the TIF terms. When it comes to TIF on this site, what I heard as this project went through zoning and through our early conversations with the HRA, is that we were not interested so much in half a project, we were interested in the whole project. So the way we structured the terms are that we're essentially backloading the TIF support. So if they finish the first phase of the project, which would probably be the apartment, those are a little bit easier to finance, they would receive a small TIF note to provide some reimbursement for all the new public space they're building: the easements, the sidewalks, the roadways, et cetera. I think we sized that at about $5 million. But the big TIF note would be only issued and payable after completion of the office, which is really what we're looking for here. It's that last piece of the puzzle. To have half of the puzzle finished isn't so compelling for us, but having the whole thing finished and operational and providing jobs and services and facilities like that, that's what we're interested in. So it was a negotiating strategy that we prepared, recognizing the preference of the Edina community to use TIF for public benefit, not just for any typical cost, but also recognizing the reality of the marketplace, and that is, right now, the office market is a little bit unknown. There's very few new office buildings being built. The developer feels it's worth the gamble, they're bullish about it, and as I mentioned earlier, my opinion is if we don't have a new office space, we'll never attract those tenants. So this is the right time to aim high.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question, just upon a clarification, or maybe just explaining. When you said that this qualifies as a renewal TIF district, I assume that's versus a redevelopment district. Could you explain the difference between those two, and then why we feel like this one qualifies as a renewal TIF district?
Sure, happy to. There's a number of different types of TIF districts. So for example, when the city created the Southdale II TIF district, that was an eight-year economic district. When we built the new parking garages at 50th and France and the Nolan Baines Project, that was a redevelopment district, which is 25 years. This one that we're proposing is the shorter term, it's a 15-year renewal district. For a renewal district, some of the buildings need to be blighted and meet the substandard test, often called the blighted test, and that's what we have on the site. The current bank building is old, it's not what a bank is looking for today or tomorrow, but it's not substandard and it's not blighted. So the bank building itself simply doesn't qualify by that measure. The vacant office building does. It's older, the insulation is poor or lacking altogether, the roof is bad, the elevators are bad, the stairways are bad, the heating system is bad. Not unsafe, it's not going to fall down, nobody's going to get hurt tomorrow, but that office portion on the site does satisfy the blight test. And since one of the two buildings qualifies, we're able to designate it as a renewal district. I mean, just to be frank, the developer was hoping that they would both qualify, that would give them a longer runway, a little bit more certainty. We go by the numbers, and our numbers show that the best they can do would be a 15-year renewal district.
Member Sutton, any questions? All right. I don't have any at this point either. The developer, would you want to come up and talk a little bit about the parking issue? And anything else you think is relevant before we open it up for public testimony?
Sure. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mr. Nundorf. With regards to parking...
Do you want to identify yourself too, please?
Sorry, Ted Carlson with Orion Investments here on behalf of our development team. With regards to parking, the traditional parking ratios for office users is four per thousand, and retail tenants are up from five per thousand, that's per square feet. And if you remember back to the entitlements, we looked at different parking ratios and parking studies and traffic studies, and we are parked a little bit less than was recommended because we believe the trends in parking are heading down. But we still need to compete with what's in the market today. And what's in the market today for Class A-type properties is really Centennial Lakes, which has operated above 95% occupancy for a very long time, and Normandale Lakes. So we worked with Mr. Nundorf and staff to provide a mechanism to give us the parking we need today to attract quality tenants to our city with flexibility in the future. So as hopefully parking needs change and modes of transportation change, then we can provide a way to convey this land to the city for a dollar. So hopefully, that answers the question, but if not, I can certainly try to elaborate further.
Number Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess what I'd like to hear is what you're hearing from your leasing agent, that, because I've heard that, oh, you're just looking at the wrong people, or you've got the wrong investors. We can do this with a lot less parking. So I guess what I'd like to hear is some data that you're hearing from your commercial leasing agents about what the market requires and what they're hearing, both from real-life people who are looking to move potentially into this building.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Robert Jackson. The bare minimum that we've been told from our leasing team that we can get by with is four per thousand on the office, which is 640 stalls and 200 stalls for the retail. So 840 total stalls.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions for Mr. Carlson or Mr. Carlson? Was there anything else you wanted to provide in terms of information to supplement Manager Nundorf's presentation?
Not at this time. We've had a very spirited dialogue with the city's advisory team, and you know, we're excited to be here in front of you today, and this process is coming up on two years. And I believe this is the first meeting we've had in a long time that's been in person without masks, so for that, I'm grateful, and I've been grateful for the team that we've gotten this far, but it's been a challenge, and we've brought 13 different constituents together in this project, from the neighborhood, to the residents, to the city, to the county, to the watershed, to residential renters, to commercial renters, to retail renters, to meet the sustainability guidelines, to meet the watershed. France is a county road, so there's been a lot of collaboration, a lot of leaning in, and we're hopeful that we can continue to proceed with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nundorf, would you come back up? One of the questions, or I guess a series of questions that Member Jackson asked caused me to think about, and I guess me or your comment as well, the future of parking. We don't know what that's going to be, but you did some really creative things along with the city's team. I think Jay Lindgren and Nick Anhut in thinking about that parking structure possibly not being needed 30, 40 years from now, and what's going to happen with that parking structure, or what might happen if that comes to fruition where we don't need as much parking as we need today?
Sure, yeah. As Mr. Carlson had mentioned, we did have many spirited conversations the last several months. We really tried to get creative. This has been a very challenging project to work on. The market is so uncertain right now. As we negotiated most of this, we were all in our homes on Zoom. Nobody was in an office building, so there's a lot of change out there. But what we did that was, I think, the most creative... But what we did that was, I think, the most creative at this point, and I think we all agree that none of us have structured a deal like this before, but we're all willing to give it a shot. We know that we need the parking today. So there's about 540 parking stalls on Site C that would be constructed, that would have public use rights to them. At some point in the future, that parking garage is going to wear out and need a lot of replacement or need to be reconstructed. And at some point in time, you're going to ask the question, is it worth it to rebuild it? And maybe in 40, 50, 60 years, we don't need 540 parking stalls. Maybe we need one giant Uber drop-off zone, you know? So hard to predict what, what future trends are going to be like in that regard. But the way we str, we structured the deal is that if at any point in the future, the developer or future owner, eventually I presume at some point they'll sell the project, when they no longer need that parking or no longer can satisfy that public use right, the city has the first right to buy the land for a dollar. And then we, we have a true stake in the game where we are the decision maker. Do we need 20 parking stalls? Do we need a heliport? Do we need a transporter? Do we need a public park? We'll be able to guide the future land use, but we know that today and for the, for this, for the foreseeable future, we need 540 parking stalls. Not as glamorous as teleporters, I admit. But that's something that, we researched it quite a bit. It gave all of us pause, both on the city side, our legal side, and certainly the developer's side. I think it's all something we're a little bit uncomfortable with because there's a lot of uncertainty for both sides. But to me, it's a, a public benefit, not for my generation, but probably two generations from now. And we'll see how it works out.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Lindgren or Mr. Anhut, anything either of you wanted to add before we go into the public hearing?
Nothing right now, Your Honor.
All right, thank you.
No further questions.
Standby. Yeah, you may, we may have some. So I'm going to open, Member Anderson has a question that's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your, your comments on the potential acquisition, Mr. Nuenendorf, of the, of the parking ramp? It is curious to me, what, so what would be the criteria? What, what is going to determine? At what point would that be determined? And we don't know what future ownership would be, are the, how is, how is this structured to be certain that it, I don't know how you would determine when that has obsolescence to the degree that, that triggers that we acquire it and, that there's a lot of, it's, it's a curious matter to me. I'm not stating it very well, but it's curious. Thank you.
You put me on the spot on that one. I wasn't prepared for that question tonight. But it is detailed in the term sheet that we considered at the HRA a few weeks ago. So at this point, the way it's envisioned and the way that it's summarized, and I haven't refreshed that, so I don't remember every detail right off the top of my head, but it's a, it, it's a right that runs with the land. So whoever owns the land, this is a right that the city will always have. And it's really, we talked a lot of, we talked about a lot of ways to measure when and how you decide. And I might ask Jay Lindgren to opine as well, but we really drew it back to fulfilling the public easement right for public parking. So, because we talked about in 99 years, it reverts to the city. Or in, when the first giant leases turn over, we get to reevaluate. Or when, you know, a lot of things wear out after 60 years, maybe that's the right time. It's hard to predict exactly what that magic year is going to be, but the common denominator that we kept coming back on was we have a public use right that will, that will be issued, that they have to provide 540 parking stalls for public use on the site. At some point in time, that's not going to be sustainable to the owner. I don't know exactly what year that will be, but that's the measure that we have in mind. I think from a realistic perspective, at some point, it's not going to be worth it to the owner if transportation trends change like they're saying that they, they will. It won't be worth it to rebuild the facility to serve another 60 years. And at that point, I think that's when the city could step in.
Okay, thank you.
Now you're going to get a chance to give us your thoughts on that issue.
Trying to read your eyes there to see if you wanted to start up. I agree with everything Mr. Nuenendorf said, and I will also say I have not done this before, and I've done lots of projects, but we will have a recordable document recorded against the property. So that's the first thing. It binds the property perpetually. We, we have right now is a term sheet, not that recorded document, so I have no doubt we'll continue to have some robust conversations. But I think the concept is if in the future, it doesn't make sense to maintain it anymore, now in order to not just have the public benefit of having a portion of the property used for public parking, there's an additional 50, 60 years from now, public benefit that the city or its HRA gets to decide what is the future reuse if we don't need parking. So if the marketplace continues to demand parking, if the commercial leasing continues to man, demand parking, well, then the property owner will maintain that parking. But if it ever gets to the point that there just isn't a demand, well, now the redevelopment opportunity belongs to the, the city of Adana and its housing and redevelopment authority. That's the concept in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Lindgren. All right, folks, thanks, Mr. Nuenendorf as well, Manager Nuenendorf. The potential adoption of Resolution 2022-26, which would establish the 70th and France Tax Security Financing District, is a public input, public hearing matter. And so I'm now going to open it up for public testimony. And as we've been doing in this virtual world and this hybrid situation, what we've been doing is leaving these public hearing matters open for several days beyond the actual date of the hearing. And in this case, we would suggest to the motion maker that the public hearing be closed at noon on March 14, 2022. And then we would continue this for action by the council on March 22, 2022. So let's open it up now for any public testimony that people wish to provide. We're going to go to folks that are in the audience here in the chambers first. If anyone wishes to come forward and testify regarding the potential establishment of this TIF district at 70th and France for the project there, the US, so-called US Bank project, please feel free to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Ryan Holton. I'm a resident of Adana. I'm here tonight to.
What's your address, Ryan?
6501 Parnell. I'm here tonight to speak out against establishing a TIF district at 70th and France for this project. I think first and foremost, I should point out, I am not against the project itself. I think it's been well thought out and planned, and it looks beautiful. There's no doubt that a Class A office building would serve the community. As you drive down France, you can see a lot of for rent signs, particularly on office space and in other areas. So it's, my big, my issue is, I think we, the city finds itself on some of these TIF matters at a crossroads between what is legal and what is right. I can't see any reason why we would, I don't know why we don't have numbers at this presentation. We had them at the HRA, and now we gloss over at them for the city council meeting. But we were talking about assessing $11 million of the TIF towards building a parking ramp at a time where we're spreading out policy across the city to limit parking. Doesn't seem like the values are, you know, running in parallel lines here. Furthermore, we just talked about this ramp ad nauseam and what the public benefit is. And what it seems is the public benefit is 40 to 60 years from now, we might get to decide what else we want to do with it. Will that be another TIF district? Will it be somebody else investing? Based on the numbers from the HRA and, and that presentation, there's not 540-some public parking spots. There's 43 public parking spots. There's 543 spots that, you know, you might get to park in after 4 o'clock or on the There's no public interest in the site other than the people that live and work there. It was brought up at the HRA meeting that, you know, other cities look at things differently. Bloomington, you know, uses public, their TIF dollars for that at the Mall of America. There's a huge public interest at Mall of America. And when you drive to Mall of America, you can actually park, which both things would not be true with this parking ramp. I do a lot of development and construction in Minneapolis, a city where developers and construction companies are expected to pay for the costs of their projects. We had a long presentation about the sack and whack charges and everything under the ground and, you know, and sidewalks and connectivity. We have, developers and construction companies in Minneapolis are expected to pay for that. Furthermore, all those costs go into the performa. So everything that we're talking about as this big public benefit inflates the costs as well.
Mr. Holton, I need to get you to wrap up your comments, you've gone beyond the three-minute mark.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Short of it, I ran the numbers myself in my office. One metric that's not talked about in here is a, is a debt yield. Simply NOI over your debt. This project on both phases is a complete home run. It would, it will happen without public money. All you have to do is say no. It will still happen. Last, the grossest thing I found on here was the $6 million in working capital.
Mr. Holton, I need to have you wrap up. I can't let you have more time than anybody else. We set the clock at three minutes, so I want to ask you to wrap up your comments. I needed to have you wrap them up.
Okay, one last point.
All right.
Phase two has almost $6 million in working capital reserves. Doesn't seem to match up with anything. It's 5.2% of the project. The only thing I can think it matters is on that, is to get this bottom number below 8%. That's 7.99% because the cash-on cost annual return is to not exceed 8%. Like I said before, I truly believe this project will happen without any public money, and this parking ramp does not have any public good whatsoever. Thank you.
All right, we don't have anybody else in the audience. Is there anybody online waiting to testify?
I do have one person on the line, but not yet indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder, if you would like to testify in the public hearing, please press star one, then the number, then that will get you in the queue to speak. With that, of course, I have someone ready for you to speak. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Julie Rissler? Ms. Rissler, as before, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Rissler. I live at, my name is Julie Rissler. I live at 6112 Ashcroft Avenue. This project is far too big for the location. It does not adhere to the comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be land where eight-story or less buildings are placed. The other thing is that if you look even at this formal document for the TIF district and you turn your attention to page 72, there is a chart that says site data chart. And it concludes that the site is 5.97 acres in size, but that's not how big it is. The site is 5.7 acres in size. And that's in other parts of the document. So we have .27 additional acre, acreages that is added on, and that's almost a third of an acre. And what I'm wondering is why is this happening? And I have a feeling that, you know, just given the number of times that we have structures that go up so close to the public right-of-way, and they are supersized, they don't fit the site. And so you get all of this kind of, you know, shifting lines, smoke and mirrors to make something that is just way too big fit on the land. And I think that is probably what is going on here. So please take a look at page 72 and consider that. Also, please look really closely at the diagrams and consider, these structures are going to be really, really, really close to sidewalks, really, really close to streets. And, you know, here's somebody say that, well, we're going to need the parking ramp because now we're dependent on cars, but maybe that'll change. And by the way, you know, the number six goes by here. I would like every single elected official to walk down France Avenue by that little teeny-tiny bench that is the place where you can wait to catch the six. And then go down the street to Hazelton and think about what it would be like if you were going to go down that corner and turn onto France and try to make it to that bus stop if you were somebody with a walker or somebody in a wheelchair. Because you can't do it because you've got a post right in the middle of the sidewalk. And we really are not, I know that's a county road, okay? I understand that. But when we as a municipality keep greenlighting these projects that push so close to the public right-of-way and make it impossible to have a bus stop that is reasonable, you know, look what you can find in Richfield, look what they're doing, look how wide those sidewalks are, and just really how wonderful that is working. We are not promoting multimodal transit at all. And when you try to go across France Avenue, it is really, really hard. And I think about the additional traffic that is going to come because of this. And also, as I look at the way the project is divided up into those four plots of land, I'm wondering if a really transparent.
Ms. Rissler, I need, sorry to interrupt you, but I need to have you wrap up your comments. You're well over the three-minute mark.
Okay, I'm sorry. But does it meet the housing density limitation of 100 units per acre on that one site if you were to do it accurately? Thank you. Sorry I ran over.
Thank you. Thanks for your thoughts. Anybody else?
I do not have anyone else.
Okay. All right. Just going through your presentation, Manager Nuenendorf, and I know in some of the past presentations, we've talked about some of the TIF-eligible components of this and the costs involved. And I think Mr. Holton was thinking, at least this is the way I understood his, his comment was that he was thinking that all $11 million of TIF would be going into the parking ramp. And I think there's a lot of different components to the, to the TIF that do include the potential parking ramp assistance, but the, the creation of the streets, the park, the dividing that super block into four parcels, I mean, those are all, what I recall were TIF-eligible expenses and were included in the, in the analysis that went on. Could you help us out on that? Just, just for clarification at this point in time?
Sure thing, happy to. Let me go through my notes. Let's see. We did have that table and that information when we walked through the details of the, of the term sheet a few weeks ago. For this project, there's, there's two measures that we apply. One is the, the amount of project costs that are eligible per state statute. There's plenty. I think we added about, my recollection is around 50-some million of state-eligible expenses. Historically, Adana doesn't just do what the state says we can do, we usually dial that back quite a bit. So with this project, we are looking at, let's see. We're looking at demolition costs and site remediation. That's something that is unique to a redevelopment site. If it's a greenfield, obviously you don't have to demolish anything. For this project. project, there's about $8 million of site improvements that are necessary. The roads, the sidewalks, the, the setback on France is about 50 feet. So that's dual sidewalks, plaza, multiple layers of trees and landscaping.
But I should repeat that, too, because I think that was one of the concerns Ms. Rissler had was the setback. So it's, it's actually more setback than we've, we've experienced on France generally.
Right, right. And that's part of the new, part of the new Southdale Design Guidelines. So there's about a 50-foot setback along France, and there's about a 30-foot setback on 70th to address that concern of having large buildings too close to the street, but also the preference to have some degree of mass on the street rather than just surface parking. So the, the cost to build the site improvements is just under $8 million. There's a new public plaza that would include a number of different public art pieces to make it more interactive and engaging. That's about 1.2 million. The public parking expense is just, just under 12 million. So that's the 540 stalls on Site C, which is the dedicated parking structure. The first level would be open for public access pretty much 24 hours a day. The upper levels would be available only evenings and weekends. And then in Site A, which is the, the apartment site, there's about 120 parking stalls there. That would be public parking pretty much 24 hours a day. So we did not include the private parking. So in the basement of the office, there's underground parking for the executives. We did not consider that TIF-eligible. State statute says we could. Historically, ADINA doesn't do that. And the same for the private parking for the residents in the, in the apartment buildings. That's a multimillion-dollar parking structure to serve the apartment. That will be self-financed. There's no public access. In, by our interpretation, there's no public benefit. But for those stalls where the public actually can go and visit and use the parking facilities, that comes to about 200, about 12 million. A couple other miscellaneous soft costs, and that rounds out to 22 million.
All right. Thank you. That prompt any questions from other council members? All right. I just wanted to get a couple clarifying points out there on the record. All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on March 14, 2022, and continue the action to the March 22, 2022 City Council meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
We had a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on March 14, 2022, and continue the action to the March 22, 2022 City Council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion who stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion's adopted. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your participation this evening. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on now to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, which has some board and commission appointments that we're going to discuss this evening. I want to get into the... Okay, and Manager Neal is going to, yeah, Manager Neal is going to handle this matter. We've got a nice report from M.J. Lehman from the, our community engagement manager. He did a terrific job here. And we interviewed over 80 people, 86 interviews. And I've got to commend City Manager Neal. He attended every single interview. We divided responsibilities up between us and had two, three sessions apiece, but he was stalwart and was there for all of the activity and some wonderful, wonderful interviews with people in our town. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, the City Council conducts a competitive board and commission selection process. We're always looking for new volunteers to participate in, in our boards and commissions. And this year, we had 15 open seats that we were seeking to fill. We accepted applications this year from December 1 to January 14. We had 99 applications. That 99, that pool of 99 decreased ultimately to 86 as people dropped out or changed their minds or couldn't, we couldn't get an interview time that worked. But really, for 86 of those 99 people, we, we did interview them. And we offered interviews to everyone who submitted an application. As you noted, council members participated in two or more of the six interviews. So all of you had a role in that process. We had two of our existing board and commission chairs. Michael Epstein from, from our Human Rights and Relations Commission and Annie Schilling from our Heritage Preservation Commission also participated in three interview sessions apiece. There were six interview nights altogether. We generally did about between 12 and 15 interviews each night, each of the six nights. The council came together on February 23 virtually and conducted a debrief and, and selection process to pick the 15 folks that you are probably going to approve later tonight as a slate. And those folks also included, in addition to those 15 board and commission members that are selected and proposed for appointment tonight, there were also 11 folks that are, we're putting on what we kind of colloquially call the bench, but was formerly called our alternate list, to fill vacancies that occur kind of off-cycle throughout the year. So we're, we're to the point in the final process step tonight, and that is presenting this slate of appointments to the City Council for appointment. I also, too, want to recognize M.J. Lehman and M.J.'s process. She's designed for not only attracting board and commission members, but also processing them, selecting them, and ultimately orienting them, which we will do later this week, actually. And she's very good at that job. I think we do this as good or better than any city in America, to be honest with you. We put a lot of time and effort into it, and I think we get a lot out of it, too. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor, and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Manager Neal or comments regarding the process from council members? Yeah, Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I said this in every interview, and I meant it in every interview. This is the most fun that we have. I just love the people in the city of ADINA who want to step up and serve their city. It just, it's such a reaffirming thing that we live in such a great city where so many people want to participate. I counted, I went back and looked, I did 42 interviews, and of those 42 interviews, 13 of them had that wanted to do community health, and 12 of them wanted to do the Arts Council. And I think one of the things that I take away from this is a real sense of where the community's at. And it was kind of an overwhelming message that we all want to get back to seeing one another and refreshing our lives after COVID. And this just overwhelming desire that we heard from so many people to want to bring everybody together and be together again and to celebrate our lives and, and kind of look at where we are. And I thought that was really an interesting statistic. Lots for the Human Rights Commission, for the Energy and Environment Commission, and lots of all, for all of them, but those two really stood out. And I just, everybody we talked to was interesting. Everybody we talked to was generous with their time and their vision for our city, and I want to thank them all.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment? I think Member Jackson did a good job expressing the sentiments of all of us, that we are so grateful that we had so many people in our community that are interested in supporting their town in, in different ways other than just, you know, the regular pace of life and living here and shopping here and sending your kids to school. They want to get involved in community. And that's a pretty special thing. That, that one-town, one-family theme that we talked about at the State of the Community today certainly resonates with all these appointments and all these folks that are interested in serving. Manager Neal, how do you want to handle the, the recommendations for people on appointments? Do you want to read the names? Or do you want one of the council members to read names?
I'm happy to read them if you, but, but really, we need a, we will need a motion in a second.
We will need that. Yeah. So why don't we have somebody make a motion and then name the folks that we've, we're suggesting for appointment to the various commissions, and then we'll have a discussion and vote on it. And same thing with the bench. Somebody want to read? Member Jackson?
I'll make that motion. Thank you. Do I need a second, or should I just read them off?
I think, make a motion that the following people be appointed to the following boards and commissions, and then go ahead and read the names. I don't think you need to specify the term.
Okay.
When that ends, but the name, the board, the board or commission on the appointment, the person we want to see appointed.
Terrific.
Thank you.
So I would move that we appoint the following people to the following commissions. Elena Zabarin to the Arts and Culture Commission, Nick Madison to the Community Health Commission, Chip Howard, John Chip Howard to the Construction Board of Appeals, Steven Shima to the Energy and Environment Commission, Andrea Metzshiehi to the Heritage Preservation Commission, Amir Misagi to the Human Rights and Relations Commission, George Pastrana to the Human Rights and Relations Commission, Erica Welsh to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jamie Poole to the Parks and Recreation Commission, John Spanakky to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Bryce Weaver to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Quincy Smith to the Planning Commission, Bonnie Padilla to the Planning Commission, Lori Olson to the Planning Commission, and Robert McVale to the Board of Appeals and Equalization.
Why don't you also name the alternates as part of your motion?
I would also like to name as alternates for an unscheduled vacancy in the first six months of, of the appointments, the following people. Jennifer Springer, Matt Giljohn, Jennifer Cook-Riggen, Jennifer Faith, Michael Larson, Kelly Von Heidekampf, David Jones, Patricia Rubenstein, Lisa Rippe, Natalie Buden, and Mary Lou Cohen.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Member Stottin seconds. The motion as stated by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending appointment of the person's name to the various boards and commissions and establishing the alternates therefore, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, Member Jackson. Okay, on to commission correspondence. I'm assuming you haven't got any new correspondence that's come in. And then on to manager comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. And Jennifer, can you pull up the... Okay. I'm going to share with you, I've been sharing with you during this timeframe, the COVID, kind of an update on COVID data. And so that's what I'm going to show you again tonight. So this is the same, the same structure that we've looked at before. This is, one of the key metrics is the seven-day total cases per 100,000 population by date of tests in ADINA. So this is what you can see. These are the number of new cases, a number of new positive cases that occur in any week. And you can see the really precipitous fall that we've achieved here by the middle of, by the middle of February. Next. Seven-day rolling average of new cases per 100,000. Again, this is what, this is a view that is, we are tracking Bloomington Public Health tracks, and again, it's dropping pretty quickly. This is the new cases of, new cases per 100,000 compared to hospitalizations. And this is what we are looking at in that regard, too. Again, more data that is falling. Little harder to see, but again, this illustrates the same concept that, that infection rates are falling very quickly. The, the large graphic here is, is from, from ADINA. The other two are from Richfield and Bloomington. But you can tell, you can kind of tell, if you look at the farthest right data at the bottom of that plunge, we are now down to rates that we last saw in like August of 2021. Testing date, positive test rates. So this is where we classify this, the jurisdiction into low transmission, medium transmission, high transmission, and extremely high transmission. We are in the low transmission rates with this rate of positive tests at this point. It's, one thing to tell you is that the data from the three cities is, is just a little bit ahead of Hennepin County and Minnesota. We're just, they, they have some extra process to go through. We've had some questions about this data as well, the metro wastewater data. This has been interesting to watch as, as it sinks, as it was synced pretty closely with the testing data that I just showed you. This shows you some of the, the data that they see at the waste, at the metro wastewater sample that they take near one of the, one of the wastewater treatment plants. And they measure how much COVID-19 is, is in the effluent. And it's been dropping clearly just as quickly as testing has been dropping. One of the interesting things that public health people are going to be following from here on out is whether they, that relationship still has some kind of link to it, because there's so much more testing being done at home now, much more than there ever was before. And while the testing data that we see could be impacted by people taking tests at home and then not taking tests that get monitored, this test doesn't lie, right? You can't obscure how much COVID-19 is in the wastewater. And that's it.
Good. Thank you. Has that prompted any questions from council members? All right. And any other information that you wish to share this evening?
Just a short welcome to Lieutenant Dave Venney. He's recently been promoted from sergeant to lieutenant.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah. One of the perks that comes with that, one of the perks that comes with that promotion is the opportunity to attend a council meeting every once in a while. So you'll be seeing more of Dave, I think, in this role.
Lucky you, Lieutenant.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being with us.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I just want to point out, he agreed to do it before when he was not a lieutenant.
You know, I didn't even ask him if he'd agree to do it, actually. Yeah.
All right. Let's go to council comments. Let's start with Member Pierce.
Nothing from me today.
Member Stottin?
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Neal's presentation. So are we, how are we proceeding going forward? You know, we, I mean, the CDC came out with their color coding of red, yellow, green to indicate when folks should be paying attention and tuning up or tuning down. Are we following the same thing for our staff, for our facilities, for our council chambers, et cetera?
We, we are, but we haven't, we haven't yet put in place the color coding, right? So, so we are seeing, there are some actual, even though things are starting to drop pretty quickly, there is really still a lot going on in the background from CDC and from Bloomington Public Health. From our standpoint as a staff, we have a small group that's comprised of public health, mostly public health and, and public safety and HR team. And we'll meet tomorrow morning, and we'll look at the newest data, and we'll make some adjustments based on our system. And one of those will take a look at the color coding that, that they're producing, and also some of the new framework changes that we're looking at from Bloomington Public Health.
Yeah, I think going forward, the important part is just to be as good of conduit as we can be for providing simple, easy-to-digest information for folks to have, to protect themselves as best they can. And hopefully, hopefully, we won't have another flare-up, but I suspect we will. And then we need to be ready on that end as well. I'm pleased to be back in chambers and without masks and all that, but, but I think we have to continue to kind of provide information in a way that people can understand. And then the second thing I wanted to just comment on the hometown heroes presentation tonight. That was terrific, Jennifer. Thank you for putting that together. I was struck by the commonality of the three folks who we recognized and how modest they were about what they did, and that they said that anybody would have done it. And I hope that that's true, but they are the ones who did it. And so it's great that we recognized them, and it was a really powerful moment. So thank you, Jennifer, for organizing it and for recognizing those folks tonight.
Member Anderson?
Thank you. I--
I, Member Stutton's words are, are, ring. I, I too was struck by the humility of our hometown heroes. It, it just was, I think it was reflective of the kind of person who steps forward in a moment of crisis. They're not really looking for that. They're not seeking attention. They're just doing what is important at the time, and these people all reflected that. And I, it's, there's a lot to learn there. Also, we received this week a couple of emails on removing Russian vodka from liquor stores. And Manager Neal followed up on that. I mean, it wasn't a lot of laws, there's five bottles, but there could have been 10 or there could have been 20. But the bottom line is, is that that is an important symbolic gesture in support of the people of the Ukraine who are under so much misery at this time. This week, we've had a lot of emails along the way here from a new outfit in town, Fusion Academy. And I walked through their, their, their space the other day. It's a, it's a very interesting, low-key educational opportunity, which is really kind of based on, on tutoring more than anything else. Very interesting concept. One of the things that they mentioned over there was a student who is struggling in any given topic. If, if somebody is struggling with math or somebody's struggling in a science course, they can move them through a whole course in, in, in a summer of mornings, which I thought was interesting, because there's sometimes demand for that kind of thing, special attention for, and, and it just, it just, they're here to do business, and they are moving from the corner of 76 in France across the street, I suppose, into a, into the Centennial Lakes Center. And it's a new outfit in town, so I wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thanks for doing that. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last week, I took a tour of the infrastructure of the Braemar Arena. And I've heard that we're going to get money to fix this, but I have to say it was breathtaking. I, I can see that there really is $13 million worth of work to be done there, and I'm so glad that we're working on that. But I do want, as we're looking at the capital improvements project, to have a very strong discussion about what deferred maintenance is and how we got to this point. $13 million of repairs is a lot of repairs. And I, I really much want to fix it up, and I, I hope that we get the money to do that. But I also want to look forward to the, in the future, a future city council doesn't have to make a decision like this. So what we can do to, to get the, a handle on how we pay for this. And then also, I wanted to make a comment of, or a question, actually, about supporting the Ukraine. And I know that we are able to, that France Avenue is lit up in colors, and I don't know if that's a Hennepin County thing or if that's an Edina thing, but I would like to see, I would like to see that. I was struck by pictures across, across the world in support of Ukraine by blue and yellow flower, or lights. So I would like to ask for that.
Good thought.
So, and that's all. Thank you.
Yeah. That's a very good thought. That humble nature of the folks that received those awards tonight was really, it was fascinating, I thought. So thanks for those comments, everybody. Manager Neal, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what Mr. Eichhoff from Arden Avenue was upset about, and the only thing I could conclude is that he was upset about the mask mandate at Braemar. Had done a FOIA request to gather communication on the issue and asserted that, I think that there was an open meeting law violation some way, somehow. Are you seeing that anywhere in any of the...
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
Take a look at his data.
All right. Thank you for doing that. And then I saw an email from somebody, and it was timely. They were wondering, well, what did, what did that mayor do at that mid-winter meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors? And of course, they've been waiting for us all to get back together again. And I could hold you here for another 20 minutes as we talked about everything that went on there, but, and... And I won't do that. Promise. But I, I will put together some of the ideas that, that came up from that conference. And then folks will, from time to time, say, well, what was the value of all that? Whether it's your, you know, council members going to the National League of Cities meeting or me going to a mayor's meeting. And I can, I can tell you, you need to look no further than what's happened at the federal level in the past couple of years with respect to the CARES Act, with respect to the American Recovery Plan Act. All of that activity at the federal level had a significant amount of input from mayors and council members across the country. Cities were responsible in large part for what's occurred here. It was cities that were able to convince the, not only the president, but the, but the Congress that there ought to be payments directly to cities to sustain their operations and do other things. And then I think a lot of folks at the federal level say, would say that it was mayors and, and cities and city council members across the country that were instrumental in the Infrastructure Act that was passed. And so there's a lot of good things that happened from working together, as we know, in our own town and working nationally in these organizations like the National League of Cities, where some of our members are going this week, or next week, I guess, or the week after, I guess it's, week after. And, or me attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors meetings. That Wednesday, we started on a Wednesday, January 19th, and right off the bat, I don't think I've ever seen so many cabinet-level people at, at meetings of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. We have, we have a new president, is the mayor of Miami, Francis Suarez, who's the son of an immigrant, who came here, his dad came here when he was four years old and, and made a roaring success of his life as an immigrant. And Francis is doing the same. We had the deputy assistant to the president on intergovernmental affairs for remarks, Julie Chavez Rodriguez. Then we had Mike Regan from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Gene Spurling, who is implementing the American Rescue Plan Act, talked to us all about some of the work that they were doing. And then we had Janet Yellen on that, on that Wednesday morning as well, to talk about some of the things going on at Treasury. And then, of course, some of the things I've talked about, like the Council on Metroeconomies, I always like to attend that to get the U.S. Metroeconomies update and the information on the implementation of the Rescue Plan Act. And the, the meetings go on and on. It's like a lot of seminars or meetings that lawyers go to for CLE, and you've got all your choices that you have to make. So when you tend to think about things that you're interested in and that your city thinks is important to be working on, those are the things that I tend to, to gravitate towards. On, oh, still, I'm looking, go page after page here, just on Wednesday, on things that were important, including the afternoon follow-on session with Gene Spurling and Mayor Gallego of, of Phoenix. And then we had a special session at the end of the day with the Justice Department on initiatives, initiatives focused on cities, a briefing for mayors there. Thursday, all kinds of activity. I attended several different meetings that morning in addition to the culinary breakfast. You know, Target has a racial justice program that they're doing, a racial justice reform program, and they've got cities in different categories that made me think that we should be thinking about applying in the, in round two in the smaller city category. There's $350,000 available for large, medium, and small cities, done through the Center for Compassion and Equitable Cities. That's a part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So I'm not going to keep going here. I could, but the days went on and on with Pete Buttigieg and President Biden at the end of the week, and Marty Walsh and, and a lot of other mayors that are working for the president on the implementation of the Transportation Infrastructure Act, including Mitch Landrieu, the former mayor of, of New Orleans. So I'll get these ideas to folks that are relative to what I, what I think is, you know, some of them are going to go to the chamber, some will go to Manager Neal, some might go to, to Manager Nuenendorf, but I'll get those out to everybody. And it was a very worthwhile meeting. And then tomorrow, I'm going to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Leadership Team Meeting, which is always held in the city, where the current president is in, and that's Miami. And so we'll be down there for three days, meeting on some of these same issues again, including a meeting on Saturday with police chiefs from across the country on some of the things that we can be doing in terms of public safety. So I'm looking forward to that. So that's, that's it for me. I think Member Jackson made an interesting comment, and I think as we wind down the meeting here tonight, we ought to, ought to be thinking about the folks that occupy the Republic of Ukraine and send them our best thoughts and best wishes and, and hope for the kind of democratic future they've established for themselves that they can hang in there. So is there a motion to adjourn? Anybody else have anything? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds that we adjourn. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. You stand adjourned. Let's go.